Enter your participant ID followed by town. Otherwise, just the town to continue. You are in the meeting now. There are two participants in the meeting. This meeting is being recorded. You are muted. You can mute or unmute yourself by pressing star six.
You can mute.
You can hang up your phone, Peter.
You are unmuted.
Hello?
Hello?
We can hear you.
Oh, my God.
Hang up your phone.
Or mute your phone. Okay. I think we're good. We can start. Well, hello, everybody. Um, this is the Sustainable Bethel Commission on November fifteenth, seven P. M., or a little bit after seven, seven oh six P. M. And our first item on the agenda is pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under one individual liberty and justice for all.
Have there been any correspondence?
There we go.
Got a lot of technology, right? I can't live without it. Um, is there any correspondence or any emails?
No.
Okay.
Hello? Can you hear me now?
We can.
Awesome.
Are there any public comments?
I would like to make a public comment. Billy Michael, twenty-seven and a half Fleetwood Avenue. I like to come here as a member of the public and constantly reaffirm my opposition to this commission going for that bronze status for a equity coach. I wanted to be on record as an equity coach. And I, I believe I've spoken against the transit-oriented district to this commission. If I haven't, I've spoken to other commissions about my opposition to the transit-oriented district, the entire philosophy behind it, the loss of local autonomy or personal freedom. And I wanted to go on record as, as, what did it be? Not noting that there was a Republican candidate that just won election for the planning and zoning on a Republican sweep of local government.
Yeah, it was in his public.
Oh, in the.
He was elected.
But he was elected. But what I meant was, yeah. Public. Um, he, a plank of his, in his campaign was, I want to abolish the transit-oriented district, to which there was no voter outcry. There was no backlash against the candidacy of Kenny Parsons, who ran on the premise, I want to abolish the transit-oriented district. So for someone like me, who oftentimes feels like a voice in the wilderness on the TOD and an equity coach, I just wanted to say to this commission that somebody was just elected to office in Bethel that opposed, publicly opposed to transit-oriented district. That's my commentary for November.
Thank you, Beth. Cynthia McCorville, nineteen Elton Avenue. So somewhat echoing Billy's sentiment, but even more so, I don't, I don't think that this town in general has an appetite for TOD. I don't. In fact, I, I've been working with, I mean, we'd never really even be allied, my neighbor, who is a staunch Democrat. I'm registered independent, but I'm conservative. And we formed a partnership. We have a Facebook group, Stop Overbuilding Bethel. Excuse me. She ran for planning and zoning and did not win as a Democrat. There's a lot of pushback on TOD. And it seems like the people or organizations who want to push this are just pushing through with it not really hearing what the people are saying. And a lot of it is driven by state legislation that is wholly unfair to any, everybody but the builder and the developer. So, and I'm a capitalist. I believe, you know, you should be able to develop your land. But there's also being a good neighbor. And I think that a lot of these rules, I think we have to stop whatever, you know, because, and there's no transit. There's just no transit. And to think that people will be willing to be at the behest of a bus schedule or air train coming now and then, it's just not practical. And it just, a lot of people are up in arms about it. So I don't know how much your commission is involved in that. And I also echo Billy's concern about the certification, the certification from the state that requires that you have an equity coach. Because it's almost like, um, because, you know, I read the emails. And there's like, oh, well, sixty-nine towns have, you know, belong to, like, are certified, going for every town in Connecticut to have the same kind of commission. It's just not going to work in, in all of Connecticut. And I don't think it's necessarily going to be very popular here. That's all. Thank you, Cynthia. Anybody else in the public would like to say something? Okay. Oh, my remarks. Okay. Um, so we have a, one more opening on the commission. We now have a commission of six, and we have one more. And working towards that, hopefully by next month, that will be filled. I spoke to the town about the communication. The town has revamped their website and some of their social media. It's important that we have, we get our page back, the Sustainable Bethel page, as well as have some access or have the access to the Facebook page. So we're working towards that with the I. T. department. Since we have a lot going on and we want to be able to communicate digitally in another way. Regarding the Sustainable Connecticut, Tia will talk a little bit about it during the commissioner reports. But we are working together, all of us, collecting information from the town and other groups to upload to the online application. Regarding the toolkit that's required, we did speak about the A. A. R. P. walk audit to comply with this component of the certification. And Gabriella and also Kelly will be volunteering to lead that effort. And you can talk about it a little bit if you, you know, just as a real high-level summary later on the commissioner report. We're looking at a date in mid-May. The community match grant, like I said before, the Bethel Arts Group will be submitting something related to that. Last month, we talked about the food pantry. They're not interested because they already did a fundraising. And there was some confusion about qualifications, but I believe that has been clarified. If they do choose to participate with the community match grant, they do qualify. And we also have some interest from the Bethel Land Trust. I met with the Postotonic Resource Recovery Authority's Regional Recycling Task Force last week. And in addition to learning about what everything, everything that's going on in the state related to recycling and reuse, et cetera, that includes only the recycling, all the food waste and everything like that, and the, also the regional recycling billboard contest. They are looking at doing a regional repair cafe. We spoke about that several months ago. And it would be a great thing for, for a regional effort to be able to coordinate vendors that would offer their services for repair small appliances and bikes and watches, and also teach people how to do this. So it's so in essence, instead of throwing something out that may be broken, they will teach people how to fix it. And so they, that, so that will help decrease the, the waste stream. So we're looking into that. And there may be a possibility that that could be part of, or say, but we're not sure yet. So we're going to follow up with that. Had a conversation about the transportation and parking study. We're still gathering information, putting together a presentation related to the tran, the transportation or traffic component of that downtown. Regarding parking, they're still creating a parking management plan and discussing capacity and enforcement. I also went to the statewide broadband program, talking about increasing, the state would like to increase the broadband statewide to one gigabyte statewide. There are two multimillion-dollar grants that cover unserved and underserved areas in the state of Connecticut. One is for forty million dollars. The other is for a hundred and forty-four million dollars. When you look at the broadband map in Connecticut, and then if you drill down to Fairfield County, then drill down further to Bethel, we don't really have a lot of underserved, unserved areas. There might be some that are underserved. And that is more related to perhaps education. There are some people that still don't understand how to access. Maybe Wi-Fi is not affordable. So there's an education component. And also, as we grow, there is, there are some, our schools do a great job, but there might be some kids that have parents from other countries. So there might be a language barrier. So it's more of an educational component, and some of that grant would cover that. There is an interest, though, to, to increase the public Wi-Fi in town that would cover large parts of the municipal area. And that would be, uh, there should be Wi-Fi, public Wi-Fi in all of our buildings and our railway station. And there might be a possibility to have the Wi-Fi in parks and the street, on trails. So that's something that we are going to look into. Electric vehicle chargers. There also is, we would like to, the town needs to conduct some kind of assessment related to electric vehicle chargers. There were two that were put in the, from ChargePoint at the, at the railroad station. They're, they've kind of passed their time. And while electric vehicles in of themselves have not been mainstreamed and probably won't for some time, there are a lot of people that have them and are buying them. And if you live in an apartment, in a condo, or you just don't have space, you don't have that opportunity to charge your vehicle. So we're going to be looking at an assessment, at some kind of plan and make some kind of recommendations related to location, demographics, density, types of different chargers that are available in the market. So we'll be working on that. And some, we don't really have to reinvent the wheel because some of this has already been done around the state of Connecticut and in Fairfield County, you know, the towns. So we can, that, that help, we can use them as a benchmark if that's, if it makes sense. The food scrap program continues to grow. There's more increased awareness. In the spring, the town will be providing free compost at the transfer station for those who are interested. Details are still being worked out. And of course, there's still an interest in, interest in continuing to discuss community gardens as part of this whole circular process. That's my report. Any questions from the commission?
I just wanted to clarify.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, you mentioned interest from Bethel Land Trust for community match fund?
For the trees.
Yeah, that was more like an idea, not.
Okay.
Just, I just wanted to clarify that it isn't like a thing that will definitely happen. More so, it's a conversation I would like to start.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Well, that's good. That's a good conversation, Beth. Yeah, absolutely. Anybody else? All right. So consideration of approval for the October eighteenth minutes. Do I hear a motion? Someone. Second?
I said it.
Okay. All in favor?
All right.
So in your packets, Mary did a great job putting our twenty-twenty-four meeting. It should be in there.
Yeah, I'm checking to see if everybody was here at the last meeting.
Oh, okay. Oh. They might have been online. Peter, were you here last time?
I was not.
Okay, so now he can't. Yes, for a state. Okay. So, yeah, you have to say, thank you again for reminding everybody if they were here or not. Okay. So consideration of approval of the twenty-twenty-four meeting schedule for Sustainable Bethel Commission is in your packets. Hopefully, you got a chance to look at that. Mary put this together. Next year, starting in January, January, right? We'll, we'll be meeting in meeting room A. Any questions about, oh, let me hear a motion to, to consider approval. So moved. Okay, second. Are there any questions about it? Okay, all in favor? Hi. Peter vote?
Did Peter vote?
Oh. Peter, did you vote?
Vote?
Yes.
No, I didn't. Okay, aye. Aye, aye, aye. I thought since I wasn't there, I didn't vote.
Well, no, this is a new approval.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Um, all right, planning committee report. So we, we met and went through in detail. We had a pretty lengthy meeting, almost two hours, I think, right? And we discussed where we were on the different elements and went through what kind of progress people were making and what we were going to do. And proceeded to talk about some of the, the, the work of trying to compile different pieces of, different sections of information and like your work with the land trust and trying to talk with those folks. And I, I know, Kate, you were working also on the Earth Day stuff in addition to other things. So, so basically, we're just, I, I guess the, the main report would be, we're working on getting our certification, you know, and we're working through it. I think everyone's got a lot of irons in the fire, so, you know, work in process. And then we're going to be getting together. Da, 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 da. I know I got it. Oh, wait. Oh, twenty-seventh. Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm in February for some peculiar reason. That was interesting. I was like. You just jumped from Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Year. All right. No, we're going to be getting together on the twenty-seventh at nine-thirty. So, um, so I, I, I know for myself, I'm in the process of, I've got a lot of things from people, back from people. I just have to put it in to compile it into a usable format, and we'll be able to post it. The one thing that we did talk about was the walk audit using the planner that A. A. R. P. had put together to, to, to basically give you an outline of, here's how you do a walk audit. Here's how you organize it. Here's the elements. Here's what you need to have. Catherine, you were going to get with, excuse me, with the folks from.
Economic Development.
Economic Development, right? To, to talk about where specifically we were going to, to be doing the walk audit. And then we'll need to put together a committee of folks to work on that. It, it falls under the planning committee. I know I, I am not the best person to put that together because, A, I'm a lot of traveling next year, so I'm not going to be around a whole lot. But, um, but I think other people have skill sets in that area and, and can help get that organized and, and, and we'll do our walk audit. It is something that is being promoted across the state right now, especially with the complete streets and the, all the work that's being done to reduce the pedestrian fatalities and accidents, which was a different meeting, not related to this work, but other work that I do, where they talked about this last year was the, had the most accidents, pedestrian fatalities of any year in Connecticut. And they think a lot of it is due to distracted drivers as well as distracted walkers. And on my way here, I, I encountered a distracted walker who was walking their dog, wearing completely black, and looking down at his phone. And the only reason why I saw him in the street was because his phone glowed a little bit as he was reading something. Otherwise, I would never have seen the person. And he's walking right in the middle of the street. So it's easy to see why these kinds of things happen. So if you want, we can talk a little bit about who might want to be involved with the walk audit, or we can postpone that and pick it up again at our planning board meeting and, and talk in depth about it then, however you all would like to proceed.
I mean, I, I'm doing it, I guess. I'm.
Okay. You raised your hand. Okay, good, good.
So, yeah, I, I'm taking this on. I will help plan the actual event. I'm hoping that other people will help me as time goes on.
Without a doubt. Oh, you'll have help. It's just, it's just heading it up is really the, the challenging thing. And I do have some resources. I was just in Washington for some other work. And I, I touched base with a couple of people. So we may have some folks who we can tap into for some expertise about who's doing it and also for some of the work that's being done in other cities across Connecticut. So we may have that as well.
Um, yes, thank you. Um, so basically, the, one of the things that we have learned from all our different engagements with town residents is this sense of safety and increased walkability so that people around town feel safe. Another major concern we've heard over time is the parking situation and increased traffic situation. As we've learned with other studies that have happened throughout town and throughout the state, it is, it is a matter of having a variety and mix alternatives of pedestrian safety, car safety. And it can look very differently depending on the area and the needs of that particular area. One of the areas that the town has identified, other than downtown, is the Route Six corridor. And there, there's a lot of new development. There's existing businesses. There's a lot of traffic. There's limited parking, and there aren't very many sidewalks. And the few public transportation stops are not the safest or most accessible. So that is something that town residents have mentioned to us. And it's certainly something that the town itself has also identified with the various sort of evals that they've done in determining which areas to focus on for further development. According to the, what's the acronym of that report?
P. O. C. D.
Yes, thank you. Um, so, yes. And looking forward to solidifying a date. Like we said, we were looking at mid-May. May eighteenth, May nineteenth is the date that I'm sort of tentatively interested in. If anybody has any major conflicts, please try to change it now. Because, yes, I think that weekend works on a lot of levels. It's not too hot. It's not too cold. There isn't a major, uh, long weekend or vacation with the Bethel Public Schools. So I think overall, it'll be, you know, potentially great at capturing a lot of different, you know, groups around town. One of the, one of the things that we definitely need to do in order to have this walkability audit be really meaningful in capturing the actuality that the residents are experiencing is involving the local businesses, residences, whatever is, organizations, whatever's in that area, hopefully we'll be able to touch base, get in contact, and have some sort of participation on a volunteer basis. And, yeah, we'll be echoing from now until then what, what the intention and the need for volunteers in order to capture their own experience walking throughout town, in particular, that area of town, so that we can gather information through this toolkit audit and, uh, you know, present what we find to the town. And hopefully that will add to whatever process they're going through in terms of evaluations and walkability and safety of transportation and all of that, and how we can add recommendations and capture the experiences of, you know, families, elderly, disabled folks, people in cars, people that are walking, people that use public transportation, people that would like to use public transportation, all the like, hopefully we'll capture a lot of different perspectives, and that'll create a broad sense of what the town will need to be addressed.
Plenty of information. May nineteenth is the memorial day parade for the town. They have it at week twelve.
Okay.
I just didn't have to do that.
I did it. Thank you.
I have a question. Yeah. So when you say downtown, like, what is just the start in, in points that?
I think it's basically the, sort of, this whole building towards the train station. I think the main drag of.
Greenwood.
Greenwood, thank you. And sort of that included Barnet Square.
Carol Lusie's and that.
Like from Carol Lusie's down that way up to.
Our, our, oh, walk audit will be in a different area. Probably, it won't be in the downtown area. It will be more something out in that Route Eight, Stony Hill, six, uh, six, sorry. I can't get all those.
Yeah, it's nice. We know, we know what you mean.
But, but it'll, it, it's not going to be in this section of towns. It'll be up, up more towards, yeah, towards the other end of the Stony Hill.
So kind of like from Big Y will.
Yes, to maybe to the forward. Yeah, so the reason is because it's, this area of town's been studied a lot. There's a lot going on here. That area needs a little more effort right now. That's like the next thing, so. And there's a lot of new development that's going on out that way. If you've driven out there recently, I was there today. I was shocked to see piles of dirt had just like gone away. And all of a sudden, all kinds of stuff near Big Y was, or, you know, where little angels used to be.
Right, exactly.
Yeah. So, yeah, so that's, that's pretty much where we're going to be. Yeah. Anything else from anyone? Yes, no? Okay. So we'll make it up again in our planning meeting so we can dive in.
Yeah.
And get a lot of the detail work. Do you have something else?
Um, I don't think so.
The walk audit?
No, that was the overview.
Okay. No more questions? Tia, anything else? Nope, I'm done. Okay, so any, so commissioner reports? Did you want to just briefly say what's going on with Earth Day? If there's anything?
Earth Day, I have not started reaching out to people, but I have plans to start reaching out next week. I have a lot of ideas that I jotted down last year, and so.
Is there anything else?
Um, I did have a conversation with Gabby and J. G. from Bethel Land Trust. And we went through a lot of our four different, five different areas or in the certification. And just, he connected me with a few different people and just to pull together things that we already have that we can put towards the certification. We're not creating anything new. We're just utilizing what we have as much as we can and, and going next.
Excellent.
I just had a quick question. So Earth Day's extended to Sunday in March.
It's in April. It was early April twenty, last year.
The twenty-second is a Monday. I remember, I saw that, which is the actual Earth Day.
Oh, so maybe it'll be that Sunday.
I think that's also April vacation for Bethel Public Schools.
From my end, I have started, you can get the worksheet for the audit. And once I have enough data.
For the energy, yeah.
For the energy.
The plant, right. Peter?
Yep.
You got anything?
No. Um, nothing related to Bethel, Connecticut.
But you're going to be, you're going to be helping looking at the electric vehicle charger assessment and the strategic plan that we're going to look at.
I'm, I'm going to discuss with the folks in New York City DOT who are in charge of that and get some insight from them. I was with them on Monday.
That would be helpful. Any information that we can get that will help the town of Bethel? I have some information from Richfield and other places in Western Connecticut. So we'll kind of look at all of that to see if it's relevant.
Yep.
Awesome. Anybody else under, related to commissioner reports? Any other business that anybody wants to discuss or bring up? No, no, sure.
No. Am I, am I forgetting something?
No, I'm just asking. No, I think a lot of the work is just being done behind, you know, individually.
With the planning committee.
Especially with all of, yeah, all the work that, that people are doing individually to, 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 to gather the information and get it. to, 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 to gather the information and get it posted. So I think a lot of it's that. And, you know, we could get more in-depth with the seven-point-twos and the five-point-fours and all that kind of stuff, so we can really have a detailed understanding as to what's going on.
I mean, I wrote two emails and I'm waiting for responses.
That's great. It's a, it's a tough time of the year, too. It's very tough. The holiday, you know, coming in, in, you know, a lot of places are closed for the whole week. What, you know, a lot of places are working. They're working remote almost the whole week. So it's just a challenge.
And then once after Thanksgiving, then it just gets crazy.
Escalates from there. Yes, it does. Okay, so if there's nothing else, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thanks, Mary, as always.